Testing, testing.
We can hear you, Thomas.
Great, thanks.
Okay, let's go ahead and begin then. Good evening and welcome. This is the City Council Mobility and Infrastructure Committee, January 10th, 2023. Happy New Year to everyone in the TV audience and joining us this evening. We will call them in order. Barb D. Michelle is joining us via WebEx. Good evening. And Deputy Council President, actually Zach Hall is just here right now. Councilmember Zach Hall, excuse me. We will start out with public comment. If there are people in the audience that would like to comment or online, citizen comments are important part of our process. Is there anyone in the council chamber that would like to comment at this time? Okay, seeing none. Are there any parties online that would like to add citizen comment?
Chair Joe, no one has signed up previously, and we have one member of the public in attendance, but they do not indicate a desire to speak at this time.
All right, well, thank you. The opportunity for citizen comment is always important. It's a vital part of our process. The citizens have an opportunity to give their feedback to the council. If you would like to email us, we do take a look at those emails. And this evening for public comment, we're going to be a little bit more generous. It's my understanding that after each of the main parts of the street plan or the street designs, we're going to take a pause just to have comment from the public if they would like to chime in because of the complexity of the material tonight. So with that, I will then go to the approval of minutes. Have the minutes been reviewed?
They have.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So move to approve the minutes as presented in tonight's agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, hearing a three-zero vote, the minutes are approved from November 8th, 2022. That brings us next to Agenda Item ID 1120, Public Works Street Standards Update. And I see that we have Thomas Valdres, who's joining us, Senior Transportation Planner. He'll be giving a staff presentation, followed by the committee Q and A. As I said before, public comment will be a little bit more liberal tonight as we go forward. But I'll turn it over to Thomas. Good evening. Thanks for joining us.
Yep, and good evening to you as well. Nice to see everyone tonight. My name is Thomas Valdres, and I'm the city's senior transportation planner. And tonight, I will be presenting on the administration's proposed citywide street typologies. And as usual, before I begin, we just wanted to pause here and share some questions that staff will be asking of the committee. So the first question is, does the committee concur with the recommendations of the TAB and the administration? And the second question is, does the committee have any additional feedback on the street typologies? So again, just please consider these two questions as I begin the presentation, and we'll be asking for your direction towards the end. So why are we developing citywide street typologies? So the goal of this project is to essentially clean up existing requirements and create cohesion between several planning documents that have been bolted on together over the last decade or so. And so essentially, when we put all these planning documents together, as it, as like a practical perspective, you know, when we add all these things together, they create inconsistencies, vague requirements, and they often cause confusion when we're trying to figure out what exactly is required with respect to street design. So throughout this exercise, our aim is really to make sure that the community's multimodal goals are established and incorporated into how we're designing our streets. And so, you know, knowing this, there's also going to be a little bit of flexibility that we incorporate into street design, so that is also reflected in how we're designing streets. And so one of the frequently asked questions that the administration has been asked as we have been developing these street typologies is, how do we implement code on the street typologies? And so the goal of developing these, again, is to make it clear how streets should be designed relative to our community's mobility goals. And so when we have new streets, the designs will be to, they're really going to clear up those inconsistencies that we have, and make sure that we have a cohesive roadmap for how streets should look and feel. And so this, you know, when streets come in via new development, new developers would be asked to chip in to make these improvements to streets. And these, these streets that would be applicable would be streets that are leading up to or adjacent to properties that are being developed. And so these improvements typically mean things like sidewalks, street trees, and sometimes it can even mean dedicating some property to the city for a future street. And so for most of these improvements, you know, these, these larger projects come in in more of a piecemeal way. They don't often come in at once, so it's kind of hard to tell when, you know, these improvements would actually come to fruition. So we can kind of consider this as being the plan moving forward, and then as projects come in, they would be subject to these standards. And so these improvements could often, you know, come in through development, or sometimes it's the city via city capital improvement project. That's another driver of some of these redesigns. But for the most part, it's going to be new development in a piecemeal way, and sometimes via CIPs. So with that background, I'm just going to start diving into the street typologies. And as we move forward, as Councilmember Joe had mentioned, I'll be making some pauses so that we can ask some questions and get some clarification. So moving on to the street typologies, we have three context-specific street designs that were developed as part of this project. The core streets are applicable to medium to high-density, mixed-use and commercial areas. Parkway's are applicable to roads that are intended to serve connections between communities and the interstates or freeway system. And slow streets, which is the bottom red, that is applicable to residential and quiet business districts. And then a, just for further background, there's a detailed description of each typology that's found in Item 4A of Attachment E in the packet. And so this map sort of visualizes at a very high level how each street in Issaquah would be designed moving forward. And a copy of this map is also provided in Attachment E. So all other streets that are not designed within a typology would be represented in these other groups. So we have the purple and then the gray. So purple represents the corridor-specific streets, which are shown here on this map. These streets have pre-existing context-specific corridor plans that have been developed. And this type of street encapsulates many of the streets that were within the central Issaquah Plan neighborhood that fall under the existing Central Issaquah Plan Parkway's typology. The functional classification encompasses all other city streets, and this is sort of considered the default roadway design, that all city streets that are not assigned a typology nor a corridor-specific street would be subject to. And again, this is sort of the norm. Every city does this. This is just sort of the default, that when we don't have a typology, it is the functional classification system. So again, just sort of at a very high level, the city has developed three alternatives to consider within the core street and then the parkways. And so for these, these alternatives are provided for you in Attachment E. And these alternatives show typical sections of a roadway, of a roadway design that is meant to provide flexibility in design. And just at a very high level, the first alternative follows the Central Issaquah standards and represents the least amount of change in design. And so under this scenario, Central Issaquah standards would remain in effect, and only minor adjustments would be made to add clarity, consistency, and cohesion with existing planning documents. The second alternative represents an incremental change on top of the first alternative. And under this scenario two, the administration reexamined the existing right-of-way, the way that we developed it over 10 years ago, and we're reconsidering how we can promote our current multimodal goals now and moving forward. This alternative puts more design emphasis on sustainable transportation modes, such as walking, biking, and transit use. And then this is really specific to the Central Issaquah area, without requiring additional right-of-way width, which would lead to potential reductions in developable land. And lastly, we have Alternative Three, which is our final alternative to consider. And this is really the widening alternative. And so this essentially is an incremental addition on top of Alternative Two. And by strategically adding additional right-of-way where it matters, this would achieve a similar multimodal street network that would be improved upon what we have today. And again, Alternative Three essentially differs from Two in that the total right-of-way width would need to be a little bit wider.
Thomas, could I stop you just for a second to ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
Could you go back one page to the map that you were showing?
Absolutely.
Could you repeat what the default is for the street typology if one is not selected for this central area?
Yeah, great question. So the, the default is the functional classification system. And if you would like, I can provide more background on that, what that is.
Okay, so if we have one of the streets that's, let's say, by Bernstein Park, that's, you know, that leads down to Gilman, where we have that new intersection along Gilman, that's allows us to cross all directions. The road leading up to that intersection heading north, what's that classification now? And what, would it change at all under the default system that you've referenced?
So I unfortunately don't know specifically that street, what it is. But in our street typologies, which we will be updating as part of this project, that contains all of the functional classifications throughout the city, that will not change. So there will be no change to streets sort of outside of the colored, what we have here. So no changes to corridor-specific plans, because those are already developed. No changes to functional classification, which are outside of the scope of this. So we're really just focused on the blue, the green, and the red.
Okay. The reason I was asking is that with that new light at Gilman, we're seeing increased traffic there and some congestion there at, you know, the high-peak hours. So I was wondering, maybe it's not part of this conversation, we can have it a little bit later, but if there's been any consideration to upgrading the road that goes north to that Gilman Boulevard intersection so that we can perhaps get a little bit more of a handle on both the safety there and the congestion that's occurring with the new alignment. So not for tonight, but if administration has any comment on that, I'd appreciate it too.
Yeah, I would, I would maybe ask John Mortensen to provide some background on that on my behalf.
Thank you. Before John hops on, you, Councilmember Joe, this is Andrea Snyder, Deputy City Administrator. Sorry, my mic wasn't working briefly. Thank you for bringing up that point. It's a good point. We're also working on the ITS plan, which is the Intelligent Transportation Systems, where we're going to be really looking at intersections and signaling, our signalization of intersections, and how we can improve upon traffic flow based on adopting newer technologies and better managing our signals. And so I think that that may address some of the concerns that you have. And, and then I would suggest, John, if you, John Mortensen, if you have anything to add, please feel free.
Yeah, I'll just add that at that intersection, which is Gilman, Juniper, Rainier, I assume that's the one you're talking about.
It is, thank you.
Yeah, the, the first phase was the traffic signal that's been constructed. But in our long-term capital improvement plan, we have a project that would be Phase Two, which would improve the southern end of that intersection.
Okay, that's great to hear. I'll look forward to seeing those plans and then watching it as it develops and as we look at the intersection timing through ITS. Appreciate it. The next question I had was concerning the blue lines in there. In particular, it's one line in particular, it starts at SR 900, right where the Midas store is, and it's Mall Street. Morgan Motors is right there in Midas. And then it goes through and would typically end at the intersection where the Chase Bank is before it goes into the Rite Aid parking lot. We have a blue line that goes through the Rite Aid parking lot, and then by Taco Bell, and then by Trader Joe's, and by Target before it ultimately comes out and joins the, the street that is already there. I'm wondering, there isn't a road there. I'm wondering how the long-term planning and coordination with property owners would go so that we could actually put a road in there? And what kind of timetable are we realistically looking at for that road potentially going in? If anyone has any comment or information on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I can kick it off. However, I don't, I don't have a good timeframe for you, unfortunately. Again, this, this development sort of comes in in a piecemeal way, but I can't say that Mall Street, as, as it is on this map here, was included. All the, all the core streets that we have here, or, you know, the bulk of them, including Mall Street, are straight from the Central Issaquah Plan. So this street, as we have it, was proposed in the, when the inception of the Central Issaquah Plan came together. So it's essentially carry, carryover from what has already been planned through that.
Yes, exactly. This is Andrea again. I, I would say this is something that's outlined in the Central Issaquah Plan. There's maps within the Central Issaquah Plan that outline potential new public roads to complete the street grid in Central Issaquah. And it is very difficult to ascribe a timeline to this, because typically, these things come with redevelopment. And so at the time that, that shopping center would potentially redevelop, then we would be talking with the property owner about donating right-of-way to the city or being able to use that opportunity to help develop our street grid. One of the good examples of this is actually the TOD project that we've been working on. There is an additional road that's anticipated with that project. So with the redevelopment of that property, we will be getting a, a new city road and helping complete the street grid in Central Issaquah. So that's an example of it. But of course, the timeline is very hard to predict. So that's why these are our long-term plans. We can take advantage of opportunities as they arise.
Okay, and that leads to a follow-up question that comes to mind. If someone is buying the Rite Aid property, for instance, how would they be on notice that a road needs to go through there? Is it running with the title of land already? Is there a city process? If you can comment on that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. So typically, what landowners do, especially for large commercial properties such as that one, is they would look within the plans that we have. So their, their real estate team would investigate, what's the zoning, what's the development potential, what are the, what are the long-term visions and plans for that area? So they, the, all of that information is very much available on our website, and typically developers or property investors will find that information. The other thing is that also, before buyers close on a property, is they'll do a certain amount of due diligence. And part of that process is typically contacting the city, contacting our planning department, and asking these types of questions. So it's not, it's not an easement that's recorded on a title or anything like that at this point, but it is within our plans. And typically, what happens as part of doing their due diligence is they contact us, and we go over the Central Issaquah Plan, or go over the zoning with them, and talk about exactly this, you know, future planned infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions from members of the committee right now? Deputy Council, actually, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. Yeah, just a really quick one. So we're not envisioning any update to, in particular, the Newport corridor-specific plan, because we've already kind of aligned that with our mobility goals. Is that right?
That is correct, yes. So Newport Way has a corridor-specific plan, and that's sort of outside of the typologies discussion. It's, it, the, the corridor-specific plan is, has been developed.
Okay, and we're not imagining any adjustments, or, okay, great, thanks.
Councilmember D. Michelle, do you have any questions at this point, or can we go on with the presentation?
Yes, not, not at this time.
Okay. Go ahead then with, continuing the presentation.
Great, thanks very much. Great, so I'll just backtrack a little bit. So again, yeah, we've, you know, developed three different alternatives to consider. The first alternative represents the Central Issaquah standard, so no change in design. The second alternative represents a, no widening of the existing Central Issaquah standards, but we've sort of reimagined some of the current uses so that the design is more multimodal in nature, providing more for pedestrians, cyclists, and particularly transit users. The third option is a incremental change on top of the second, and it represents a widening option. So, and the downside of this would be that potentially could lead to having less developable land. So some of that land may be allocated to the street. So that's sort of the high level of the three alternatives within the core street and the parkways that we've developed. So this is an example of a core street. So this street is northwest Maple Street between Gilman and Newport. It's a future core street that we have here on the plan that's carryover from the Central Issaquah Plan. So as we can see here, this is Target and the Issaquah Commons Shopping Center. The road is currently, has landscaping and other amenities to the right of the sidewalk. There is currently no bike lane here that's provided. The travel lanes are pretty wide, and so this, this could potentially lead to some speeding issues. And so just as a general statement, in the event that Central Issaquah, sorry, in the event that Issaquah Commons Shopping Center came to the city wanting to redevelop, the city could ask them to chip in for improvements based on the core street design. And so this design would provide more of a, you know, a more comfortable experience for cyclists. It would support having better access to transit stops, and other improvements that we would ask from them would be incorporated into this. And so this is that first example. This is carrying forward the Central Issaquah street standards. And so with this design, the design has a very wide sidewalk, which is great for pedestrians. Landscaping and other amenities are provided between the sidewalk and parked vehicles. Cyclists are provided a bike lane located between parked cars and passenger vehicles in the travel lane. And so while we acknowledge that there's some really great features to this design, we do need to say that there are some negatives that are worth mentioning. The negatives are that this design is currently, it could be pretty uncomfortable for cyclists, and it may deter many who could potentially ride a bike from running down the street. The reason for that is because a cyclist is essentially sandwiched in between parked vehicles, so there's a potential conflict with the doors. Planners like to call that the door zone, so a cyclist could be within the door zone. And you're also sandwiched between moving vehicles that are traveling much faster than a bike usually does. So this combination of the two can really deter a lot of cyclists from wanting to ride their bike down a street like this. Additionally, the travel lane is, you know, it's a great size for a passenger vehicle. However, it could be a little tight for a larger vehicle, such as a transit bus. So this type of street, you know, maybe not very comfortable for cyclists, and transit, it could be a little bit narrow for a bus to get down here. Alternative Two, so this is again the preferred alternative by the administration and the TAB. This would seek to improve upon the existing Central Issaquah standards to address the deficiencies that I just mentioned. And so in contrast to Alternative Number One, bike lanes would be next to the sidewalk and would be great separated to be lower than the sidewalk. So this would improve pretty significantly cyclist comfort. So we, we really want to encourage alternative modes of transportation, especially in Central Issaquah. And this would really achieve that for cyclists, getting them off the street where you have moving vehicles and providing a more comfortable cyclist experience. Additionally, one of the other key issues that we identified with the first alternative is that wider vehicles, such as transit, may have a hard time going down this street. And so to handle this situation, we're proposing designing the street with a parking buffer. So it's a really narrow one-foot buffer. Does, I mean, you wouldn't even know it's there, really. But that one-foot buffer really does make a difference for providing a little bit of space between parked vehicles and traveling vehicles. This parking buffer is considered a traffic engineering best practice, and would allow larger vehicles, such as transit buses, to use that buffer area if needed. So that would sort of give a wider berth for a larger vehicle. That would also reduce the risk of side-swiping parked vehicles if a larger vehicle went through next to a parked vehicle. And so this little bit of paint on the road essentially would provide a narrowing effect on the street, which would make sure that vehicles don't feel like they can drive faster. By, by having a wider street, you're essentially making it more comfortable for a car to drive faster, which we don't necessarily want in a commercial area where this would be located. So again, a little bit of paint makes a big difference. It would allow buses to get through here. It would make it so vehicles wouldn't feel like they could drive much faster. It wouldn't make the right-of-way any different. And the net result would be that by making these little incremental differences, we can really rearrange the street to make sure that cyclists feel more comfortable. Parked vehicles, it's comfortable for you to get out of your car. And transit buses could, could pass through here pretty comfortably. And the third option, so this is alternative number three. And again, this is the widening option. So in this alternative, we would have widening of the bike lane and the travel lanes to make sure that cyclists feel more comfortable. There's much more space for cyclists. Transit vehicles could safely pass through here. But again, by widening the street, we would see potentially further reductions in development potential on private properties. And when buses are not present, or when larger vehicles are not present, that could lead to higher design speed of the road. So cars would potentially drive faster on this type of street.
It seems like Councilmember D. Michelle has a question.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember D. Michelle.
Yes, as Thomas knows, I have a lot of discomfort with those words, comfortable and uncomfortable. And I don't know if you saw his reply to me, whether that was shared with you or not, but perhaps Thomas could go into a little bit more detail about what those mean and how they would be measured. those mean and how they would be measured and how the public would know what we're talking about when we talk about comfortable bike lanes or comfortable transit corridors. So Thomas, do you want to, would you like to explain that in more depth for maybe the other council members or people who are watching on YouTube?
Absolutely, yeah. So I really, in developing these slides, I was trying to really take out some of the jargon that is really essential for many planners and engineers as sort of a shorthand for what things mean. By using the word comfortable, we're really sort of, we're getting at some metrics that are used for different types of facilities that are developed. So comfort is really at the core of many of the metrics that we use. So for example, if we're talking about sidewalks, you know, one of the metrics that engineers use is level of service for pedestrians, so pedestrian level of service. And so comfort is really at the core of that. So a, you know, a level of service A is really like free flow, like a pedestrian, like somebody walking down the street would not feel impeded at all. They could walk as fast or as slow as they want in any direction. On the flip side, if you have a more congested sidewalk, so, you know, in the, in the case of a, a core street, you know, we're, we're talking about a commercial area. We want people shopping. We want people milling around and, you know, going to storefronts and such. We would really want to see a sidewalk be much wider than say in a residential area where you wouldn't necessarily have that. So for this type of street, not to get in the weeds too much, but we're, we're proposing an eight-foot sidewalk which is essentially double of like what is the minimum. And we want that because we expect more pedestrians to be there. And so to make a sidewalk wider means it would be more comfortable for the person walking down that street.
So to follow up on that, when these, when these are finally adopted, I know we need to go through another round of process, but when these are finally adopted, they will all be tied to some actual standards, some actual written standards that people could look up and find exactly what we're talking about when we're talking about comfort, right?
That is correct, yeah. All of these standards are tied to, you know, best practices, they're tied to metrics that we, we track. We, we want to achieve certain, you know, for cyclists, it's level of traffic stress. We want to achieve those, those are written down in our mobility master plan. So these are all things that we track, these are all things that are tied to existing planning documents, these are all things that we want to improve upon. And the alternative number two, the administration and the TAB's alternative, this, this really ticks all the boxes for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy President Hall, do you have a question?
Yeah, thank you. So another con to option three, this widening and acquiring additional right-of-way was, would also be that we would have to wait for those opportune moments, right? Those strategic opportunities to get right-of-way in the first place, is that right?
I, yeah, I, I would, I would add to that, that, you know, as what was said previously, we don't know when these projects would come in, but for, for the most part, I would agree with you. The alternatives one and two really follow within what is already expected for new streets that are already in the Central Issaquah Plan or are within the existing right-of-way of what we, what we do have currently, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, are you done with the core street presentation or do we still have a little bit more to go?
Great, yeah, I'll, I'll just keep going. I do have a pause here that I was hoping to make just to drive in. So the administration is presenting again these alternatives and I wanted to briefly talk about the discussion with TAB that we had. So again, yeah, we, we discussed this alternative with TAB, these three alternatives. The TAB again recommended alternative number two be pursued. This was because no additional right-of-way would be required. It would be more comfortable for parking on street and it would be more comfortable for cyclists and transit buses. The TAB further recommended that intersection safety be taken into account, so similar to what was mentioned previously. We do want to make sure that intersections are being designed in conjunction with street typologies. That's a little bit outside of the scope of this project, but we, we do, you know, realize that intersections are connected to these, so we want to make sure that we're doing what we can to make sure that safety is promoted obviously, but then also intersection function is also very important. So again, alternative number two was recommended with that. And to summarize, these were the three alternatives and I was hoping to maybe take a pause here as I realized there's, there's a lot of information, so I think a pause would be great here to ask the administration for feedback or potentially if you want to provide a recommendation for a preferred alternative.
Great, thank you. We'll open it up for any questions from the committee members and then as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, because each of the topics are a little bit weighty, we'll go ahead and open up for any public comment at this juncture as well. So Councilmember De Michele or Deputy Counsel President Hall, if you have any other questions, I'll open it up for you for a moment.
Sure.
Okay. Deputy President Hall, let him go first.
Great.
All right, yeah, a couple of questions. So you had mentioned if an adjacent, this might be a better question for Director Dollywell too, but you would have mentioned earlier that if adjacent private property were to develop, we could then approach them and ask them to chip in for core street improvement. How does that work? Are we literally asking them to chip in? Is there any, anything concrete behind that or how do we go about doing that?
Yeah, again, I can, I can kick this off and I might lean on mini a little bit, but essentially as the, you know, as, as Andrea had mentioned, you know, we, we have developers that come in, they would come to the city, we, this, this information will be provided directly on the website and as some of the, the things that the developer would have to do would be to see what sort of easements are on the property, see what other regulations would be required. So this would be, you know, adopted in our, in our planning process here. This would be in the, the Public Works Street standards that they would be looking at. So there's all sorts of regulations that, you know, when construction happens would be required for them to do. So the, the team that is on the development team would be looking at all the requirements that we have and this would be sort of one of them. And the existing right-of-way is what we have. If we need more right-of-way, that may be asked of the developer. That would come in from the property that is, is proposed to be developed.
Thanks, Thomas. Yeah, I can just add to that, you know, it's, it's the scale of the redevelopment that occurs. So it, so frontage improvement is required if it's a complete redevelopment over 50% or something like that. So not for your small additions and, and maintenance and those kind of things. So there's that threshold that triggers the frontage improvement. So we want properties to develop, you know, the sidewalk where it eventually be and not, not where it currently is and so they would build their stretch of the frontage as part of their development for, for, again, but there's, there's usually back and forth in terms of how will it transition to the neighboring properties, you know, so there's a lot of details that get worked out on that. As we look at the whole Public Works standards, we also want to build in, you know, the proportionality test, how does it work and can we give them, you know, some sort of credit towards the impact fees if they're going to do that development? And, you know, John's here on the call as well and he can tell you how it's handled on a day-to-day basis, but getting these stretches of the frontage improvements in a piecemeal fashion, you know, is, is good and it has its, you know, it's challenging sometimes because if you, the prop, from the property owner's perspective of how much do they need to, you know, how will they transition when they don't control the, the properties to the east and west of them and things of that nature. But, but at least it, as, as properties redevelop, we have a bigger long-range plan in place so we know what the street should look like, that helps that conversation. I don't know, John, if you want to add anything to this topic?
Well, I think you added it or spoke about it really well. I would say some of the examples of where frontage improvements have been made by development would be where Rebel and Anthology are on Newport Way or where Vale is on, I think that one's on Seventh. But those are some examples where developed, large development came in and developed their frontage to the circulation standards in the Central Issaquah Plan.
All right, thank you, I really appreciate that context. So we, we've also spoken a little bit too about buses getting through these different typologies. Have we thought through EFRS response, fire trucks and school buses and stuff like that too? Is that something we've thought through?
I would say yes. Those are, you know, those are about the same width as a, as a transit bus, so, you know, it's, a, a transit bus, you know, could make it through a 10-foot wide road, but it would be pretty tight. The same could be said about a larger vehicle such as a EMS vehicle. The chassis are about the same, I would say, so, you know, a, coming through here with a 10-foot wide stretch, but then having that one-foot buffer really provides that extra much-needed space that could accommodate a, a vehicle, a emergency vehicle in the event of an emergency.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was out there too and I'll leave it to staff and the administration to determine whether or not we need to be communicating with them, what's best practice in that space, but I just wanted to make sure that was on the table. Oh, and this next question's about Parkway, so that concludes my questions.
Great, thank you. Councilmember De Michele.
Thanks. Thomas, you know, I always like to hear the Transportation Advisory Board discussions and I didn't get a chance to listen to their discussion on this one. Could you share if they discussed it? I noticed that they picked alternative two as their preferred alternative for all three and all, alternative two is no widening. Can you talk a little bit about what their rationale was? Was that because they want to preserve community character or did they talk about that at all and what was their rationale for choosing the no widening option?
Yeah, I, I touched on that a little bit, but I, I think I would say generally the conversation went that the existing design, the Central Issaquah standards were pretty good, they just needed a little bit of a tune-up. And the TAB was really interested in making the cyclist experience more comfortable than we currently have it proposed. And I think that, and then the parking issue, you know, as, as the stands, parking would be provided just fine, but then when you have a larger vehicle that comes through, that could potentially lead to a side-swiping concern. So again, like a, if a bus comes through here, it would have a much better time with option two than it would with the first option. And I think that's really what it boiled down to was the cyclist's safety and comfort and then providing for transit on this type of street.
I guess my question is why didn't they choose option number three? You know, because option number three does call for some road widening and I'm just wondering why they didn't favor that option and perhaps they didn't discuss it, so, but if you have any insights into that, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would say that we didn't touch on it too much. I don't want to put words in their mouth, however, staff did, you know, show them that potentially a widening, excuse me, I'll go back to the third one, the widening option may take away from development potential in that, there wasn't much discussion on that, but it did, it did, I think the, the TAB didn't want to go that direction.
Okay, thanks.
I see Deputy City Administrator Snyder has a comment.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. I, since we have a representative from TAB here this evening and Councilmember De Michele is wondering what TAB's comments are, I'm wondering at this point, Councilmember Joe, if you would like to invite our special guest to be able to share directly what some of the discussions were at TAB.
Yeah, that would be great. I'm done with my questions as well, so I was going to pause after each of the types, so this might be a good opportunity for any member of the public that would like to speak on the typology of core streets. And if you would like to come up and speak, just identify yourself on your microphone, speak clearly and limit your comments to five minutes or less. Is anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the core streets? If they have any particular knowledge or comments, they're welcome to come forward.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, Julian Midlil, resident of Issaquah. I am the vice chair of Transport, of the Transportation Advisory Board. I guess to quickly go over that last question about why we, or what was the discussion about not wanting to widen the right-of-way, that, that had mostly to do with two things, I think that surfaced during the meeting. One of those things was a member actually referenced, specifically referenced a public comment during the discussion about not wanting to increase the impervious surface. And so that was one thing that was referenced from a public comment and so they, they kind of aligned with that. And then the other one was of course the frontage, the frontage issue and the fronted, and, you know, taking away from the developments. That was another issue that was referenced. And so that's kind of, those are two of the reasons that I think TAB kind of moved away from that right-of-way increase. Another larger thing that we discussed, you know, of course we aligned with alternative two. Another thing was the intersection. The, our chair specifically mentioned that, you know, she, she rides around town a lot and she, and me, I'm also really concerned about this, that it, a lot of these right-of-ways do dump you out and leave you unprotected in, in one way or another at intersections. And so that was another big concern, which is kind of out of the scope, but it has to be addressed somehow. But yeah, those are the main things that I kind of wanted to expand upon for this, but other than that, Thomas covered it pretty well, what we discussed.
Great, thank you for your public comment on core streets. We'll open it up for any other member in the studio audience or at home on the computer that might want to give a public comment. I don't see anyone else in the chamber. Deputy Clerk, do we have anyone online that would like to comment?
Chair Joe, I don't see any virtual hands raised to speak at this time.
Great, appreciate that. I guess just one question that came to mind is, as we were talking about some of the safety issues, if you could confirm, if someone could confirm with me that core streets would be 25 mile an hour streets, parkways would be 35 mile an hour streets and the neighborhood streets would be 20 mile per hour streets, is that right or if it needs to be corrected? I think that ties into the comfortableness or the, the, the safety issue and how people feel if they expect a 25 mile an hour road and yet they're on a 35 mile an hour road, that could really make them feel unsafe even though the road might be designed correctly. So are those, are those speeds correct?
Chair Joe, those are correct, yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think we're ready to go on to the, the next street type, so if you want to go on to parkways.
Great, so, sorry, I'm going to go back here. All right, so next, you know, moving on to parkways, I have an example of a parkway to sort of illustrate what we're doing here. So again, this is a future parkway and what it looks like now. This street is East Sammamish, East Lake Sammamish Parkway, Southeast 51st. This street is East Sammamish, East Lake Sammamish Parkway, Southeast 51st to 56th. And so this road is really, it's, you know, five lanes wide. As you can see here, there's a multi-use path on the west side of the road, and this path is used by cyclists and pedestrians. There's also a sidewalk to the east on the east side of the road, as you can see here with my cursor, that is also being provided. Currently, there's no dedicated bus waiting areas or bus shelters. Transit is on this street, but there's just nowhere for transit riders to wait other than the sidewalk area that is also used potentially by pedestrians. So there's not really a super comfortable spot for transit riders to wait while they're waiting for their bus. And with the new parkway design, there will be more focus on providing a better experience for pedestrians, cyclists and transit users, all while maintaining a very comparable quality of driving experience for the existing cars that we have here. And so again, I'll just go through the alternatives that were developed for parkways. And alternative number one is the Central Isqwa design. This design provides wide sidewalks and landscaping and other amenities that are provided between the sidewalk and the bike lane. Again, cyclists are provided a bike lane, and it's sort of next to larger vehicles that could be on this road or potentially faster-moving vehicles. So kind of similar to the core street design. And as Councilmember Joe had mentioned, you know, this street is a 35 mile-per-hour design speed, and there's a, you know, bike lane to the right of those vehicles. So potentially uncomfortable for a cyclist to be riding on this type of street. And again, just pointing out some other features, there's a, a pretty large median right here that also provides a left-turn pocket, which is very important for safety on a street like this in order to prevent rear-end accidents. So those are sort of some of the features of this. There's a lot to like about this type of design. It's pretty efficient for cars. It's good for transit to like get from A to B, but in terms of the riders themselves, there's really no place for them to wait for their, their, their bus. So again, there's a lot of good things to say about this, but there could be some improvements in order to provide more for transit stops, you know, provide potentially benches or waiting areas, because these types of roads, they're longer in stretch, and by the time somebody gets to their transit stop, they could be pretty tired. It'd be great to have somewhere for them to, to sit and wait for their bus. So in contrast, for the parkways, alternative two seeks to improve upon those deficiencies that I just mentioned. This represents the administration, the TAB's preferred alternative. And the, the design here is pretty similar to, you know, what I was showing you currently on East Lake Sam. So there's a, a multi-use trail that's provided on one side of the street and then a sidewalk in the other. This design would not increase the existing right-of-way that is required, and we would be able to squeeze in, you know, pretty good bus amenities, so we could potentially squeeze in a bus stop with a shelter. And we would also be able to comfortably accommodate cyclists on a significantly more comfortable mixed-use path on one side of the street. The, the, a lot of the areas are going to be sort of flexible in nature, so like this, this section we have here is meant for vegetation, so it's much wider than a tree would need. You know, some of this could potentially be used for, you know, making the sidewalk a little bit wider in certain areas, or we could use that whole area for vegetation. It's sort of flexible in that, in that way. The existing drive aisles are wide enough for transit, wide enough for larger vehicles, and certainly wide enough for passenger vehicles. So in terms of the level of service that a auto or transit would have, it'd be significantly better on this type of street. And overall, we, we feel like this is a pretty good improvement that would really improve upon the existing design and would, on the whole, make it more accommodating for all users of the street. And again, alternative three is the widening option. In this alternative, we're providing separate bike lanes next to the sidewalk, so this would be essentially a protected bike lane that is buffered by vegetation such as trees. That vegetation area could also be used for bus stops, so as we see here, I'll use my cursor again, on the right side of the street, we could potentially use that space for a bus stop. So in this situation, you know, you could jump off, you know, if you're riding your bike and you have your bike on the bus, you could get right back on the, the, in the bike lane, or you could potentially just use the sidewalk. So it provides a more multimodal experience, a very similar experience to one that would be provided in the first alternative. However, this alternative is the widening option, so it could potentially reduce development potential on adjacent properties. And again, just to sort of talk about what was said at TAB, the administration presented these alternatives to TAB at their December meeting, and again, the TAB recommended alternative two be pursued. This was recommended essentially because no right-of-way would be required, and it would be, again, more comfortable for pedestrians, cyclists and transit users while providing a very comparable driving experience for cars. And with that, I think I'll just pause here again to give the floor back to Chair Joe and be here to provide any additional staff comment for any questions you might have.
Great, thank you very much. I'll open it up to members of the committee that might have a question. I'll look to Councilmember DeMichele first, if you have any questions on the parkways.
Okay, just one, it's perhaps not relevant question, but I love transit shelters, so have to ask. I presume that we're not dealing with transit shelters standards in this, in this body of work, right? That nine feet that you're proposing is just a concept at this point? And then we would work with Metro or some other provider on those transit shelters? Is all of that, are those correct assumptions?
That is correct, Councilmember DeMichele. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to find Metro's specific design, but I, you know, I live in Seattle, and I know that they can fit it in much smaller. So this, this nine-foot really represents sort of the national standard for what is required, and it is, it is accommodating of folks in wheelchairs, and it really like ticks all the boxes in terms of this would be the best practice for like how wide you'd want it.
Oh, good, that's good to know. Okay, we'll hope that that becomes reality one of these days. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy President Hall.
Thank you. I have a similar question because I was really excited to see the bus shelter show up in this diagram. So when it's, when, I mean, this is a cross-section of road as we're moving back and forth. When it's not a bus stop, what is it? Are we envisioning it'll go back to trees or some, because it just looks like a lot of impervious surface there on the left. So how are we envisioning the different cross-sections when there's not a bus shelter?
Yeah, this is a great question. This, again, yeah, this, just like you said, this is where, you know, consider this a snapshot of where there's a bus and where there isn't. So for alternative number two, we can see that, you know, there's like a tree there. You know, we love trees in Isqwa, so, you know, this, in the area that is not allocated specifically for that bus stop, we would revert it back to landscaping or other amenities.
Great. Okay, I don't have any questions about the parkways portion of the presentation. I like that alliteration. Open up for a public comment. If anyone in the audience would like to make comment on the pathway section, open up this time. Up, we do have a member of the public that would like to come forward. Come on forward, identify yourself, limit your comments to five minutes. You know the drill, thank you.
I'm Julian Midlil, resident of Isqwa, and I'm the vice chair of the Transportation Advisory Board. I don't think I have much to add in terms of what TAB discussed. Of course, there are the same concerns with widening the right-of-way when it comes to development potential and all of that. There was particular discussion about, you know, the 11-foot versus 10-foot lanes, because originally there was going to be a 10-foot lane in the inside lane, but there was some discussion about that when it came to larger vehicles and having that, having smaller vehicles having the berth to go around those. And so there was some discussion amongst TAB members for that particular topic. But aside from that, I think staff covered it pretty well. I guess diverging to my personal viewpoint, so this is not from the TAB perspective, but my personal viewpoint is that option three, I agree with option three, just because it does provide a separated lane for bikes. And so I personally agree with, with option three, but the final TAB recommendation is option two. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that difference, and certainly your personal opinion is, is valid as any other citizen, and we do appreciate your service on TAB. I know it's a volunteer position, you give a great deal of your time, as do all of your other TAB members, so we appreciate the expertise that you bring to these topics, and your input is very important and appreciated. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the last section on the slow-street example, and I'll turn it back over to staff.
Great, thank you Chair Joe. So for this, this option, we only have one option, so this is a pretty quick discussion here, but I did want to show you an example of what slow streets currently look like. So this example is Rainier Boulevard North, Northwest Holly to Dogwood. So this street, you know, has sidewalks on both sides of the street. There's plenty of landscaping. Parking is provided on, on the street here in this option. Travel lanes are kept to a very reasonable width in order to accommodate the light, the light amount of traffic that the street is designed for. And there's also, you can't really see it too well in this photo, but there's some traffic calming in here. There's what we call chicanes further down the road here, and this is just to slow down traffic. So again, as Councilmember Joe had mentioned, this street is designed for about a 20 mile-per-hour speed limit, and so we designed the street accordingly. And so because the road is meant for slower cars, slower vehicles, we also want to make sure the cyclists feel comfortable, so by having that 20 mile-per-hour street speed limit, cyclists do feel comfortable to take the lane and ride down the street if they wish. And so for the slow streets, we really did feel that, excuse me, we really did feel that the, the design flexibility provided and the, the way that the street was designed for, you know, adding on-street parking or not.
Excuse me, did, did you do something to your microphone, your?
Yeah, I apologize. My bad, I apologize about that. Yeah, I'll just start back a little bit. So staff and the, the TAB really did think that the design flexibility and the way that the street is currently designed really does tick all the boxes for us. There are two options that are provided, so, you know, depending on the character of the street, the adjacent land uses, et cetera, we could have parking provided on streets, that would be the option B, or option A is like the, the street that has no on-street parking provided. Again, these are the same as they are in Central Isqwa standards, so no change there. We really do think that having the option of parking or no parking is aligned with our existing planning documents, the vision that the city has for itself. And, you know, there's, the sidewalk is very accommodating of pedestrians. Cyclists do feel comfortable riding down the street because it is a lower speed limit, and it really does tick all the boxes for the, the users that the street is designed for. And again, yeah, the TAB's recommendation was to maintain the existing standards. That is also the recommendation of the administration. Great, so with that, I think that sort of concludes my presentation, and the administration would appreciate the committee's feedback on these two questions.
Great, thank you for that thorough presentation. Members of the committee, do you have any questions on the last section for slow streets? Okay, Deputy Council President Hall.
Thank you. So we've already talked a little bit about how bikers are transitioning into intersections or roundabouts from different street typologies. So I'm just putting this on the record that, you know, that's something we'll have to think about too, as streets, street pi, street pi, typologies change, how a biker is moving from, let's say, a core street into a slow street, from a protected bike lane into the roadway, and how, how that's being done safely and all that. So I'm sure you're all thinking about that because you're the best in the biz, so just throwing it out there.
Great. Councilmember DeMichele, do you have any questions?
Yeah, a couple of questions. On the slow streets, Rainier Boulevard, which is the example you chose, I, I go down that road all the time, and it, there are a lot of people that speed on that road. And so I'm just wondering if we could hear from the administration or Thomas or Andrea, what's the interplay between the way that we set a, a speed limit and enforcement? Because late at night especially, you can get people, I'm sure they're doing 30, 40, 35 through there, they're really going fast, and I'm just wondering how we, what would we just say? How do we accommodate real-life speeds with the speed limit that we set on these roads?
Yeah, unfortunately, this is a, an issue that is pervasive in, in most cities. We do design streets based on the 85th percentile speed, so the speed limit is set based off of how the street is designed. And so we can do our best with engineering measures such as chicanes. There's other options, you know, we have a whole traffic calming program here, you know, we can, we can throw in, you know, all, all sorts of engineering measures. There's also signage to sort of provide that informational perspective. There's, there's a whole lot of options that we have in our, in our tool belt. Enforcement is that other key component that is very important, and that's, that's more of a one-off kind of way to address the situation. And I guess if anybody, you know, if John or Minnie want, could provide some additional information, I would just say that those are sort of the, the three components that most cities use that I'm aware of.
Hey, I think, Thomas, you hit on it pretty well. When we design a slow street, the goal by having it narrow is for the traffic to not be moving quickly. I'm not as familiar with Rainier, Councilmember DeMichele, when you're asking your question, I was going through our traffic counts to see if we had any speed data for it, and maybe we'll have to collect some. But my guess is Rainier might be a unique situation in that Front Street gets so backed up. Well, I guess you were talking about the middle of the night, but I'm also imagining that there's cars that cut through on Rainier when they should be on Front Street. But on the engineering end, what we do when we get complaints about traffic going too fast is we go out and collect the traffic counts and evaluate it, and we have a current traffic calming policy. We're looking at possibly revising it, which is We're looking at possibly revising it, which is something that the council might see later on this year. But we start looking at other measures like community, well, we wouldn't put Rainier, but if it's a neighborhood where most of the traffic's generated in the neighborhood, work with the neighborhood on education campaign, or it might get to the point where we're installing physical devices like we did in Old Town four years ago.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's, those are really good points. Thank you so much. The other, the other thing that we hear from residents, especially in really residential areas is, well, why don't you just put speed bumps in here? And I am not promoting speed bumps. I don't like speed bumps, but it seems like that's, that is a solution that a lot of people like for traffic calming. So do you just, would you, you know, kind of comment or what you're thinking about speed bumps and what are these slow streets?
I would say there's a time and a place for putting in them. And when you say speed bumps, I'll just clarify, from my perspective, a speed bump's like what you'd have in a parking lot. And then we actually install speed humps just as technical. But for speed humps, there are some negatives that, while it slows down traffic at that one particular location, in order to really make them effective, you need quite a few more. And then there's negative impacts to fire response, and then there's negative impacts to snow flowing. And, and so it's really a trade-off and it really depends on what's the right tool for the, that particular street. In some cases, it might be like what we've got on the Newport Way between SR 954th. We're completing a raised intersection at a crossing for the King County Trailhead where the raised section is at a pedestrian zone to really try and slow it down there. But I guess to answer your question, there's a time and place for different traffic calming measures, including speed humps, and it's on a case-by-case situation, weighing the pros and cons of snow removal, fire response, and how effective they will be compared to other measures. And, and a lot of cases, having narrower lanes is one of the best ways to slow traffic.
Yeah, yeah, good answers. Thank you so much.
Okay, Deputy Council Member Hall, go ahead.
I just thought of one more question. So I love this category because it's so flexible from staff's side. So is, is it also an option to have on-street parking on one side? Is there like a one C and it's very kind of contact, based on the context of a particular area or street that we're working with?
I'm gonna have to lean on John for this. I don't know that we've ever exercised that type and I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I would say yes, because the frontage is going to be developed on a case by individual parcel or individual development at a time. And it might be that the development on the, I'll say the left side of the street has a need for on-street parking and the development on the right might not have a need for it. So it, it could be flexible in that situation.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the questions on slow streets from the committee. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on slow streets? Okay, so you know, I have been reminded that we didn't ask if anyone online wanted to comment on the parkways subject, so at this time, I'll open it up for both parkways and slow streets to anyone online that might want to comment. Deputy Counsel, Deputy Clerk Grabowski, anyone online?
Thank you Chair Joe. I see no virtual hand raised to speak on this topic or the previous one.
Great, thank you. Well, that concludes the public comments on that particular topic. So we are now to the point where the committee will discuss the alternatives proposed, the recommendations proposed by TAB, and give some feedback to the administration. So I'll open it up to committee members if they'd like to speak. And I think it's Deputy Council President Hall's turn to go first.
Oh, wow, okay. Yeah, no, I'm happy to, I heard Barb chuckle there. I'm happy to jump in first. I guess I'll just start by saying to prepare for the meeting, I watched both of the Transportation Advisory Board meetings on 1.75, 1.75 speeds. So thank you for all the work you did. And also to the staff, is it, it's Thomas, right? Yeah, Thomas and John, I thought I saw Steven there at some point too. So just thank you for all the staff who, who interacted with TAB to bring out these great recommendations. I am pretty much feeling like the recommendations that have come forward in the option two right-of-way redesign with no additional right-of-way does seem like the Goldilocks zone, where we found something that's not quite too hard, not quite too soft, just right. So that's what I'm thinking at, at this point in time, I'm very happy that we can redesign the right-of-way to better meet our mobility goals. Still recognize that we're all at support of the Central Isquah Plan and the goals and outcomes and objectives that we want to complete there, but also recognizing that we've learned a lot since it passed in terms of how best we can move people around in sustainable ways. So very happy about that. Let's see if there's anything else. Core streets, yeah, option two again, definitely safer and more enjoyable experience for bikes and pedestrians. I love the use of paint. I think that's very creative. Every now and then on different urban, urbanist blogs that I'll see, a city uses paint instead of something that costs a whole lot more and it gets the exact same outcome. So would love to see more use and more creative use of paint in how we're doing traffic calming and how we're just thinking about flow and traffic around town. I think that we can be creative in that space. And I think it does also provide that extra space for larger vehicles too, so thank you for thinking that through. Another reason I like for core streets in particular, option two over additional right-of-way with option three is the built-in traffic calming of it and keeping speeds slow. So that is a core tenet of our Mobility Master Plan, so just making sure to call that out as a very important part. And then also, yes, let's make sure to be mindful about how we enter and exit transitions between roads, intersections, roundabouts, but we don't need to say anything more about that. The parkway, I'm still thinking option two. It seems very similar and reminiscent to me of the Newport corridor specific plan where we actually use multi-use trails quite a bit. So I do see that that's a congruent there. It wouldn't be unique and new, so I'm okay with doing that and then we don't have to. We have also the flexibility built in in that too, and we don't have to acquire additional right-of-way. And then with slow, slow streets, yeah, I guess there's not really a lot of feedback to provide on that one, other than I agree with Councilmember De Michele's kind of thinking around keeping streets slow and what are all the things that we could be doing with regard to traffic calming? And then keeping that flexible in terms of, do we have on-street parking? Do we don't? Do we just have it on one side depending on what's happening, development on each side of the street? So very happy with the recommendations that have come forward. Thank you and I agree with the recommendation of the administration.
Great, thank you. Councilmember De Michele.
Well, thank you. And I too want to thank the Transportation Advisory Board and thank you to Julian for his clarifications. Those were, were really good to hear. And thanks also to staff. I thought the presentation was very well-developed and very clear, so I always appreciate getting a presentation that's, you know, very clearly been thought through thoroughly. I agree with everything that Councilmember Hall said, so I won't repeat his comments, but I agree with everything. And I'd also like to highlight that part of the reason that we're doing this is to become more accommodating for multimodal approaches. And I really love the care that's been given here in terms of how do we better accommodate buses and bicycles and pedestrians? Because our road planning for many decades was really concentrated on automobiles. So I appreciate this, this direction that we're going. I think that I would agree with Transportation Advisory Board's recommendation for alternative number two on, in every case. So I concur with the TAB recommendation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And, and I also agree with the recommendations from TAB and the administration on number two. We, as a city, design our zoning and our planning to have the highest best use for parcels. And if we're making that request or that, that demand of property owners, I, I think it's incumbent upon the city to also do the highest best use of the amount of right-of-way that we have. And so in this case, what we've done is we, we've kept the same width of right-of-way, but we found a better way to use it and to share the roads with both buses and, and bicycles. And, you know, we can't always see what the next transportation innovation's gonna be, but you know, some other transportation, whether it might be a hoverboard from Back to the Future, might be using those bike lanes too in the future. So just having the space and the forethought to, to make the space there, I think is very important. And I appreciate the great staff presentation, thinking about all these things so that we could have the highest best use for our, our right-of-ways and our roads so that the citizens can see that we've given a great deal of, of thought to it and have really worked to make sure that we're doing the very best job that we can for, for our city. And then just as a point of personal privilege, I appreciate how quickly the email questions were answered from Barb, De Michele, and the other council members. The staff and the administration does a, a great job really turning those questions around. Oftentimes are asked Monday afternoon at 2:00 and we have a 7:00 meeting and yet somehow an answer is still conjured up, put together that's very coherent and very on the point. So I just want to thank the administration, the directors and the administration that, that puts those together and makes those happen. I don't think you get enough credit for the job that you're doing. So just, I do agree with the, the recommendations and I think you've gotten a great deal of feedback from us. Some of it is on topic directly on, on the typologies, but there were some other concerns and questions about some of the other connections and the, the way that intersections might work too. And I'm sure you're gonna be addressing that in the near future. Does the administration have all the feedback that they need for this subject?
We do, Chair Joe, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Thanks for a great meeting, everybody. We are adjourned and it is 7:30, 7:53.